I'm going to call to order this meeting of the school committee on September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And if you're able to join us as we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, next up is our consent, consent, consent agenda. We have some payroll and expense warrants in there. We are also acknowledging the review and continued non-disclosure of school committee executive session minutes dated June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, under the open meeting law, and an addendum to contracts for food services director and accounts payable representative. Any discussion or questions on items in the consent agenda? Okay, good, I'm looking for a motion then.
A motion to approve consent agenda.
As outlined in the agenda. Yep, thank you, and a second? Thank you, all those in favor? Great, thank you, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, we're moving on to public comment. The school committee welcomes community members to attend meetings and to speak on matters within its purview. To promote equitable, equitable opportunities to be heard, speakers will be limited to two minutes in their comments. The overall duration of the public comment period may be extended at the discretion of the chair. If you are in the room, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. And if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand so that we can unmute you. I'll just give that a minute, yeah. Good, nobody, okay. And we're moving on to recognition.
So, this evening, we actually have two people with us specifically, one of whom has actually been to two school committee meetings now already, sort of. Uh, Mr. Gerard Coughlin, who's our new director of special education and social emotional learning, and the new Westford Academy principal, Mr. Dan Toomey. Because we wanted to give them a chance to come up here and say hi to all of you and for you to chat with them.
Well, we do appreciate it, and I know it's evening hours and after a long day. But because the meetings are broadcast, right, it does give families at home a chance to put a face to the name. So, thank you for adjusting your schedules to be here. Does anybody want to have a question in mind, or you want to say a little something about yourself?
Yeah, they were both prepared to chat a little bit about how the school year is going so far.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Thank you, so, um, thank you again for having me here. And you'll probably get sick of me if you see me much more often here. But it's really great to be here, I'm really excited to be here. And, um, the school year is off to a tremendous start. I myself and our position, I'm just working the best I can to get to know as many families, families, faculty members, and most importantly, students. I've been traveling around the district to various schools, I've met with the administration at every school thus far. I've met with the special education and social emotional learning teams at every school. And I've had the opportunity to observe classrooms, to observe the extended school year that took place this summer. I've been, I had a great time at dismissal with you the other day, Mr. Toomey.
Thank you for your help.
Yes, you needed a little help with the students there, getting to their buses. But it's been a great school year, it's been wonderful to get to know people, and like I said, most importantly, students, get to know members of the school committee, and additionally, just get to know family and faculty. It's a tremendous place to be. I'm really excited at the, the breadth of intelligence, knowledge, the desire to do better, the desire to improve, and most importantly, the acceptance of me and the openness to new ideas, new thoughts, and, and the diligence and hard work that everyone puts into in this district. And I'm just really excited to be here, it's a great place with great people. And I hope I can continue to just sort of steer that greatness and maybe give one or two decent ideas to everybody else. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Dan Toomey, I'm the principal at Westford Academy. Previously, I was the dean of students and the director of athletics here, and then I'm a prior school system athletic director and a classroom teacher. So, um, it's an exciting opportunity for me to be the principal here at Westford Academy. I've spent my time gearing up for the school year, I've learned an incredible amount about air conditioning, HVAC units. We do continue to make progress daily there with all the, as I say, are the white vans parked out front, and they've been just about there every single day. You know, addressing those issues. We had a great opening, I felt the freshman orientation went very well, freshman orientation went very well. And then our first day for new students also went very well, as well as all the grades nines and twelves. So, we had a first faculty meeting today, we had, one of our conversations was, you know, what can we do differently? What can we do better for the opening of school? And the faculty provided a lot of solid feedback on what we could do differently. My own personal mantra this year, something called best, belonging engagement, sustainability, and together. And that's something that I hopefully will use as a driving force in every decision that I make. And I've shared that with the faculty, and I've shared that with the students, and I'm sharing it here. It was actually a product of a leadership summit this summer when I had a chance to sit with many of the other principals and coordinators, and we really want to try to nail, we really want to try to nail down what is it we wanted to do this year. And, you know, I think it speaks for itself, so. It certainly is a, an honor to be here, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to answer any of them right now.
Thank you so much.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
I think it really is an opportunity to just bring you here, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, I.
Sure.
It's, yeah, I'd love to ask you questions, but we'll let you go. So many things we can talk about.
Thank you for having us.
Great, appreciate it.
Officially saying hi, and mainly for families who are hopefully homeless or.
Well, I think what might be helpful, right, because obviously, um, you two are both new to the position, it might be helpful to have you guys back in like six months or something, or halfway through the year of how things are going and how the year is going. Of course, time permitting, but I think that would be helpful for us, right? Because obviously, the year just started, right? And what a, what a start to the year.
Well, and there are natural points where they'll be back as well anyway, right?
With school improvement plans, or we expect to probably hear from.
Right, we'll hear from Gerard more often, yeah.
But, Mr. Kelly, yeah, it's a great suggestion, and I'd love to be back and just talk about growing experiences, what we're trying to do together as a team, as a community, as a special education and social emotional learning department. And, yeah, it would be great to take our temperature then, so, thank, thank you for the invite.
Well, we're always on YouTube too, if you would rather watch from home.
Excellent, yes, we'll be doing that, right, Mr. Toomey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay dry.
Okay, moving right on to superintendent informational updates.
Okay. We actually have a lot for you tonight, between, between the two of us here. Couple of school-specific updates. Mr. Hissle wanted to let us know that Rudra Agrawal, who was a former Blanchard student, who's now a WA student, completed his Eagle project by building, building a bunch of different tables for Blanchard, which was ready for the school year to start, so it was fantastic. So they had these additional resources outside for the past couple of weeks. On Friday, I think you've, you, I think you've all been invited, and if not, I'm letting you know right now. Blanchard eighth grade civics classes are conducting a community engagement forum. Mr. Chris Sanders is going to be participating in that as well too, where the various members of the Westford community are involved in either town government or nonprofit organizations. They're going to be working with the students, each one of the classes have different guests coming in to talk to the students. So that's something that they're doing, which is exciting. Ms. Cannelli wanted us to share that they had, they, they did a whole core values special community meeting at Chrisifully on, on Wednesday, where they were sharing the story about this is a school, and they were looking forward to what does it mean to be a good digital citizen. So I thought that was, that was interesting that you wanted to have us share with you. Some enrollment information updates from our last meeting. So, yes, Ms. Moochi is going to be adding the out-of-district numbers as well to that when we bring the enrollment numbers to you. And there were questions about the preschool numbers. So the preschool numbers were actually only ten below where we ended up last year. So it's not as big as the, I said it was an eighteen, eighteen number, there was a difference of eighteen right now, but when we actually look at the way in which the preschool program operates, because students join the preschool program on a rolling basis because it's based on the birthdays. So, that, that increases throughout the year. So, that was one of the questions that, that we had had last week, so I wanted to share that with you. The, we've been able to visit all the schools, which has been great. We made sure to visit all of the hottest places in the buildings at the hottest times to see what was happening last week. And it, while it was very uncomfortable indeed, the, the buildings had respite. You know, there were spaces, I think the principals were very creative with the teachers to try to find ways to try to find relief. The big thing was that we, we had heard from DCF, and we had heard from our local health department about agreeing with the idea that we needed to keep students in school, they needed to have access to lunches, we wanted to make sure that they had appropriate hydration and that they had adult supervision. And this was something that was echoed by a number of different people, so I thought that that was, that that was helpful that we were able to do that. One of the things that we saw, do you want to share Harper's story?
Sure.
This is great.
So we, so we met a little sixth, uh, first grader at Miller School named Harper. And one of the activities that her teacher had asked the entire class to do is to think about it, what do you do to keep yourself calm if you're feeling angry?
It would, no, it was actually just, what tools do you, what tools do you use? It wasn't even about that, that's what, that's what, and then she shared this, this strategy. Because other people were like, I want to use a pencil. Someone was like, I want to, they were talking about the different tools that they might use in the school year. And then she shared.
And then she shared star breathing, and I said, could you show me what that looks like? She held up her hand and showed how you take a big exhale, inhale and exhale, and it was the cutest thing, and she did it a couple of times for us, and it was great. She was excited to show that with us, we thanked her for teaching us something new, and told her that we would be sure to share that with other people so that they could benefit from star breathing as well.
It was actually a strategy that I had not seen.
No, I've never seen that.
And yeah, the first grader, she was very, very excited about sharing that with the class as well too. Or do you want to talk about the playground?
And Dr. Chu showcased the new playground at Robinson during one of his video district updates last week, and certainly encourage anybody who has the time to go over to take a look at it, to please do. It is a beautiful playground with increased accessibility for students who need mobility issues and other communication devices as well. The communication boards that we had purchased last year, or maybe it was the year before, didn't go up at Robinson knowing that they were getting a new playground, but that will be installed as well. And then they just have some really neat safety, safe walking zones that take you around the swing set, so someone might not get, you know, hit by the, the swing set, as well as hard accessibility around the entire perimeter so that the wheelchairs could be accessible. So it was really great to see that. Another update that I wanted to share is that although we are back to school, school was in session for a lot of our students this summer. The special education program had their extended school year services, where we were able to serve as a hundred and ninety-six students from Westford Public Schools, both in district and out of district. Jane Anderson, who is our occupational therapist, leads that charge for the, I think this might have been her eighth year doing so, in managing everybody and kind of administrating that end event. She had hired twenty-two professional staff members, both teachers and therapists, as well as thirty-six paraprofessionals, speech-language assistants, and our LPN that joined the staff. And certainly, that means that our transportation coordinator, Jen Piper, was busy at the helm as well. She had sixteen Westford Public Schools vans and fifteen D bus vans that were rolling throughout those summer weeks to get students where they needed to be. In terms of our HR department, we were doing quite well on filling our positions, and then at the last minute, we did have some unexpected resignations and people that had left jobs. And so, right now, we are still looking for some positions. Our food service department, looking for substitutes, cafeteria staff, and a full-time baker over at the Miller School. We're also always looking for a seven-D driver to drive one of our vans, just as backup, as well as we need a full-time one at, at this point. Facilities is looking for a plumber and a night custodian. And our biggest need right now are our teaching assistants, we're looking for eleven throughout the district. We were very fortunate that, you know, we had some great substitute teachers that had joined us all year, and they were our go-to people when we were trying to recruit, who can help us out, who can be a teaching assistant. So, we did have a lot of teaching assistants step into that role, which has now depleted some of our substitutes. So, we're also looking for substitute teachers as well. Principal aides, we have several availabilities throughout the elementary schools, helping with a three-hour window of lunch and recess. Westford Academy is in the middle of hopefully interviewing and filling a point-six FTE English teacher at Westford. And then we are also looking to fill a pre-K to two humanities coordinator. So that's a unit B administrative position, which Magali is running some interviews this week.
And then the last thing we just want to share with you is that on, we learned on Friday, when we were trying to send out a Blackboard Connect to everybody about the storm and the bus delay, that a lot of those went to spam boxes because Blackboard Connect was acquired by Final Site. And on Thursday and Friday of last week, all of the emails from Blackboard Connect was coming from this new domain, and so it created an issue, so Kathy and, and our, our data specialist have been in communication with them to figure out, okay, well, is, does Westford Public Schools need to do something to fix that? Or do they need to be doing something to fix that, but it has to be done immediately? So, we are aware of that, and we are, we are in the process of getting that straightened out. And that's it, that was a lot.
I'll just add that for the Robinson playground, there's a video on the Robinson Facebook page that is worth looking, checking out. Any questions or anything from things you heard in superintendent update?
I just wanted to check in and come back, Dr. Chu, on the heat situation this week. And, and I appreciate that, DCF, and, you know, we, we really wanted to keep the buildings open for, for all our students. But I think we've also had a number of reports back from, and various staff about just the level to which the heat battle in the buildings. And I know we have the issue of every building has its own unique persona, personalities and characteristics. And so, I'm just wondering, does, because I know we're working on our feasibility plan, and I know our goal long-term is that we will have well-ventilated, well-temperature-controlled, hopefully, buildings at the end of the, the project. But I think there's also an interim where, do we consider some sort of conversations, policies, or, or potentially a policy on how best we can navigate what I assume are going to be kind of more frequently occurring days with the onset of climate change and, and, and all of that. And I think the question came to mind is, I mean, obviously, you know, it, it, there's a health issue for students, but then I think we also have to think of as employers, what kind of levels of, um, temperatures, kind of situations we're, we're asking staff to, to work in. And I just wonder, is there a place for some sort of a dive, a discussion policy? I don't know, it was more kind of just, I felt we, we heard so many, I heard so much feedback from staff.
I think thinking of the short-term safety planning, maybe, you know, as, as the next maybe thought and a team-wide, you know, approach to think about. You know, there's the long-term planning and what we're trying to build, but also, how do we ensure, you know, reasonable working accommodations? Or, you know, I think that's a concern of all of ours, so. So, you know, supporting you and the district.
Sure, I, I would, I wouldn't necessarily recommend a policy that would be tied to a specific number.
Yeah.
Because I feel like it can be different, right? I, I will reiterate that all of the buildings had different options, right? And I feel like in terms of, you know, if there's, you know, you're right about the, the piece about the feasibility study, right? Too, about the idea that there are certain recommendations for the long-term, for the long-term piece. I, I just feel like it's a, it would be an interesting thing that I think we could continue to talk with the principals about specifically, because one of the things we had, you know, we had sort of reminded everybody right from the beginning that it, it's more important for us to, to provide this opportunity for the students to be in school. That's more important than whatever the anticipated plans were for those days, right? So kind of reminding people that we weren't expecting a great deal of academic rigor to be taking place, and they might have to make adjustments to whatever it was that they would have done on, specifically on, on Wednesday or Thursday. And that's something that I think we all have to continue to remind people. So I feel like there's, there's the communication aspect of that, where we need to make sure that there's a consistent message going out to the staff so that they know that they have the ability to let the students relax, right? And in terms of the spaces, you know, we'll just, we can just, we can just continue to evaluate it.
Is there, I mean, I miss, I'm wondering, is there a scope even for somebody like yourself and Jeff to kind of just connect in with principals now, since last week, to kind of maybe take a, a temperature of, okay, these classrooms were fine, these other ones need a bit of ideas?
Well, the building, the building principals know exactly which rooms were the ones that were, and, and we, we had the custodians
Yeah.
checking the temperatures using the same measurements, right? Using the same thermometers so that there wasn't also a discrepancy as to what was being reported.
Yeah.
And that information was, was being reported on a daily basis to us, so that we could do that. And I know there were times, I mean, a good example was once the, once the, um, once the library units at Westford Academy came back online the second day, the first thing Mr. Toomey did was to reach out, he knew which rooms were, were of the greatest need. And they started to prioritize making sure that, at specific times of the day, that they had access to these spaces. At the same time, encouraging people to utilize the spaces and to think differently, to go outside in places where they might not have done otherwise. So, so they were doing that, and I would say all of the principals were doing that. They just all had different spaces, right? So some of them had larger spaces, once the AC unit came back on at the library, right? Some of them had full classrooms that might actually have access to, because they don't have windows, that building might have a central air aspect to it. But some were reinforced by window units that had been put in place because that room might be supporting a special education student, or has in the past, that required a specific type of accommodation, right? And so, they were, they were working to try to be creative in terms of, okay, wait a second, or even, my classroom's on the second floor, but I have prep right now, or my classroom's on the first floor and it's cooler than someone's on the second floor, I have prep in the afternoon, why don't you bring your class down to, to my class, because it's cooler? So there was a, there was a, a great deal of problem solving going on. And so, yes, we're talking about it to figure out, okay, what didn't work?
Yeah.
So that we can fix that.
Yeah.
More so than, just back to your idea of like whether, again, I just, I, I hesitate to think in terms of putting a specific temperature number
Yeah.
with, with a policy, because that, that in itself could become, it, it, it could become more confining than helpful, I think.
I think it's probably just worth maybe having another look. I, I think the thing with the high school is they clearly have flexibility, and because you have classrooms that are open when teachers are having prep. If you think about the elementary school, in which we know from our feasibility study, we don't necessarily have that same scope for moving classes, you know, because none of our teachers are typically in prep and, and stuff. So I, I think I would, you know, kind of seek to maybe, um, see if we can just make, see what we've learned from, from this. Because I know we've had a number of staff and, and across different buildings kind of reach out. And, and I think it would be, um, you know, naive of us to not at least give it some thought and time and, and consideration, because I don't doubt we're going to be back here at some point, either next June or next September again. I'm not anticipating it in January, so.
We, and we will, and we are collecting all that.
Yeah.
I do want to say, for the number of people who said that it was unbearable, others also acknowledged that it was, it was uncomfortable.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I feel like it's important to kind of take all of that and figure out. But we, but we should assess it and say, okay, well, again, like I said, to your point, what worked, what didn't work, you know? And the, and the people who would, who would have the answers, who were dealing with the, the entire building throughout the whole time would be the building principals, so we'll meet with them.
Anything else? Okay, school committee updates? Chris?
Policy Subcommittee met last Thursday, and we won't preview too much of what's coming this year, because we don't know yet, but we are, we are looking through a lot of our policies, looking for potential language cleanups, like we've been doing over the past year or so, but also looking for things that could be more fundamental changes that people maybe have brought up, or might be timely at this point in time. So, there'll be more to come there. We meet again a week from Thursday, and.
There was a couple of specific ones that came out of the retreat, right?
Yeah, the, looking at policies with the DEI lens was one thing.
Yeah.
No, no, not, not just the goal, but there was like.
Some of them was the hiring practices and, um.
Yes, and purchase, some purchasing stuff that we were still looking at from last year, that we want to make sure that the policy reflects.
Okay.
The law and practice.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then there's a, one or two other policy, or policies that, um, Magali has drawn to her attention. That have just come up, come up through her work, so that's going to be coming out, so.
Okay.
And Sean has agreed to join Policy Subcommittee. It's official now. So we are, Subcommittee of.
Then you said it, you said it in a broadcast meeting, so.
Yeah, no, we're, we're very pleased with that.
It's written in stone, yeah.
No, I think, I mean, you've already shared some information and stuff that you work on in your, you know, professional life, but I think it's going to be great to have this part, so. You may regret it yet.
Any other school committee update?
Um, the town DEI meeting, um, committee met, um, I think it's two weeks ago now. And, um, I just wanted to share that, um, they are, one of the things that they're focusing on, um, this year, and they're currently working at as a group, um, is creating a community kind of calendar, um, that, so they have, they've created a working group, um, to kind of explore options and, because they're very aware that our own specific school calendar, obviously, there's only so many days we can mark, um, you know, or note. And so, um, we have looked at other districts that have kind of similar calendars that at least let staff and community members to kind of check in and see what other celebrations or holidays are, are happening. Um, and so, um, the Westford DEI committee are currently working on something similar for us, which I think will be a really interesting project.
For the town of Westford, or just for the schools?
It would be kind of for the town, but that the schools would also be able to use too, that staff would be able to access or.
To like link to it or something.
To link to it, yeah.
Got it, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, good luck, Sean.
CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, has its first meeting at seven PM on Thursday, the twenty-eighth, which will be in person in this room, and also via Zoom, so. Talk over the rain.
And did I miss anything, good update?
I think a few of us were at the strategic planning retreat last week, and the two big topic areas were the budget task force and the MBTA multifamily zoning law to explore more units of residence in the town. And I think some very good discussions were had by the town and some good feedback. I'm sure we'll be collecting feedback on the committee here as well, so.
Speaking of uncomfortable, not quite unbearable.
Uncomfortable under the tent, yes.
With the grills, too?
Plenty of ice cream to eat, so.
And then I got home, I got home, and then my family was like, you brought us ice cream, right? And I'm like, oh, I should have done that, no, I didn't, sorry.
Um, so, well, just two quick updates from me. I, in you, in your emails, you should see a reminder to share any feedback on the superintendent goals. That Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee will be meeting next Monday, next Monday. So, um, if anyone has specific wording changes or anything like that from last week's, last meeting's review, please let us know before Monday. Um, and then the other one is that we were specifically invited, I thought everybody got this mail, so I'm sorry, but I will, it's an email form too. And I will share that. But there is a, the Community Teamwork Organization in Lowell. Is, has organized a screening and a community discussion. The screening is of the film Who We Are, A Chronicle of Racism in America. And there is a, uh, reception and a facilita- facilitated discussion. On Wednesday, October eleventh, uh, in Lowell. And specifically reached out to see what kind of community leaders we could get to, um, attend and be part of the conversation. So I will share that information if anyone's available.
The trailer looks excellent.
Okay, great, I hadn't had a chance to look at it yet, but it's on my calendar, I just.
It's the, and the, it's the screening, it's at the AMC Lowes, the, the movie theater, it's a, it's at a movie theater.
Yeah.
And, um, I believe the, is it the director who's gonna be there?
Um.
The Showcase Theater.
Showcase.
Showcase, yeah.
You named two other theater chains that aren't showcases.
The kind of shows that you go to the Lowes instead of the Showcase.
Go to any movie theater, first of all, let's just be clear, cause that's, which my family gets upset with me, but.
Yes, yeah, so you're right, yeah, oh, no, um, I've got here Showcase Cinema.
The Showcase in Lowell.
You're right.
Showcase, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's AMC, is AMC Lowes a different one?
Is it AMC?
AMC and Lowes are two separate.
Woo, okay.
You merged them.
Alright, okay.
You just created a business merger.
The director, I think, though, is gonna be there.
Yes, it does, it does, yes.
The person who's, who.
Facilitating the discussion, yeah.
That's great.
What day is that again? October eleventh.
It's a, it's a Wednesday?
Yep, Wednesday, October eleventh, four thirty P M reception, five thirty P M screening. I just, I'm sorry, it was my fault, I assumed everybody got this email, um, this mail, but I think it came just to me, so I will share that.
Thank you.
Um, update, did I miss anybody else?
I was gonna say, I was just gonna find out, we don't have our student reps. We've been talking to Dean Betsy Murphy, um, freshman elections are coming up soon. And so that'll yield some of the freshman reps. But I think she said she might just appoint, for people who may not remember, we have one from Student Council, one from the Student Advisory Committee. She might just appoint somebody, cause it would be an upperclassman anyway, I think, for the Student Council rep. So hopefully the next meeting, we might have that.
Yeah.
From Student Advisory Committee, same thing, they don't have a freshman member. Bill and I are on the Subcommittee that meet with them. They have the upperclass members, there's supposed to be two seniors, but they didn't get two people even running for that in the, in the spring elections. And so. Betsy Murphy was asking, like, would we appoint somebody? Like, we don't really have a policy on that, but I said, I thought that would be appropriate that she or she appoints somebody, another senior. Cause we do, the policy does say we have two seniors on it. So hopefully soon we will have reps sitting in this.
Yeah, because we missed that voice.
In the future, I think what we wanna do is in the spring, really get all that lined up. And I, our policy does say that for the Student Advisor Committee, that they should elect a chair by June first for the following year. So we could, we should have done that, we did not do that, so.
I think that first year they were trying to wait until they had a freshman on there so the freshman could participate.
Yeah, yeah.
But it really kind of does make sense to just decide who the leader is.
You wanna hit the ground running.
Let the freshman join.
Otherwise, September is gone and.
Yeah.
It was a nice idea, but it just takes too long.
Okay, great, we're done with updates and we're gonna move to the first order of business tonight, which is the F Y twenty four District Professional Development with McGauley Ronan. Wanna come up to the microphone? On, oh, it's not on yet.
Thank you.
It was in the packet though, if anybody has.
It is, it's the, it's just, that's just the draft calendar of it, so. Did you get that?
And I have my tickets for the screening already.
Oh, alright, great.
Looking forward to that. I think Dr. Chu had sent it out.
Yeah, they had sent it to me as well, too.
Thank you, yep, no, I, I'll add that to the.
There goes, it just takes a little bit to warm up.
Well, that's true, because we didn't have anybody for public comments, so we, we haven't been.
Right, using it, yeah.
Like, why didn't we notice that it wasn't on?
Blocking it, can you see over me if I stay put?
Yeah.
Well, you've got it on your screen.
Yeah, she has.
Yeah, I have it too here, thank you.
Great.
I have just a few notes here, well, thank you, I am happy to be here to share all of our workings. Um, some of this has been built off of last year's work, so I'm happy that it's coming to fruition. So what we will be doing this year is continuing our deep dive into Universal Design for Learning. We worked on U D L Equity by Design last year, which was year zero for us. And that was more of like, um, getting to know the why, the, 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 um, the why and the what. Of, of Universal Design for Learning. This year, we're going to focus with the leaders and look at their next book in their series, A Shift to Student Led Classrooms. Is the workflow shift from teacher to student. And so that's putting the student at the center, which what we want with U D L. So this is going to be considered year one. Core leaderships and principles, I'm just giving you my notes and then I can go over that. Core leadership and principles, um, we are going to build off of some of the work that we did last year. We were kind of in tandem with, uh, the Department of Ed's Equity and Action Network, which we were able to do. Create, uh, an organic engagement rubric for our school system here. We got to test it out with Pam, a consultant from Novak. And, um, three administrators, we did that, we visited like thirty six classrooms, um, in May, which was ambitious. And we had a lot of, uh, kids that can do school, they know how to do school. So, um, this year we're gonna dig deeper into defining that rubric through our leadership. And when we meet with Dr. Chu and the principals to do our principal, um, uh, visits and walkthroughs. We'll just have that in mind and we're just, we're gonna look for those U D L promising practices, um, so we can identify them. But we also wanna grow the rubric and make it clearer for us so that it is, um, calibrated across. So when we go in and we say, we think this is ritualistic engagement, we're gonna say, well, I disagree with you, I think it's more of this. Because we found the more we did it, the more calibrated we were and the closer we got to an understanding of really what is engagement. The curriculum coordinators, uh, overall K to twelve, will be working on the U D L Continued Work from Year One. They're gonna go deeper into performance tasks and rubrics. Again, with the greater lens on engagement, which is the first principle of Universal Design for Learning. As we trickle down to the different content areas, Humanities, K two, we are doing U Fly, which is the, um. The foundational phonics program, which is, uh, research scientific based, evidence based, high quality, um, instructional materials. And we're doing that full implementation, K to two. So a lot of their professional development this year is going to fall around that topic. Grades three to five, um, under the Humanities, they will be working on the E L Curriculum, which is the comprehension side. Of the English Language Arts or the reading rope. And, um, they will be doing that full implementation this year, grades three to five. E S L is new and interesting, um, I'm having a really, a fun time working with this group too. Because, uh, we are leveraging some of the funds that were provided from the town last year. We bought materials last year, we're going to implement them, implement them this year, which is very exciting. We have English three D for our E S L Instruction, Year One. It is, um, it is a, a really high quality curriculum that was written, uh, for grades four through twelve. But we can bring it down a little bit to the grades three and our E S L teachers are so good at that. We're gonna continue writing in the E S L R P D in our work this year, throughout the year in our department meetings. Is we're gonna continue to do the professional development for, um, English three D. We're going to continue writing modules for our grade spans. Specifically grades two to three, grades five to six and grades eight to nine, just focusing on math. We started that last year, we have some drafts going. And, and then part of the funding that we got from the town last year was Rising Voices, which is a more diverse social justice. And, um, protagonists are more minorities and girls and boys. And then the L M Ss through some of the other stuff, they are working on Book Break, they did a little P D for that. It's a live author series throughout the whole year, so it's very exciting. I'm looking forward to that. The other, other things that are happening is the Inclusive Classroom Teachers, K to twelve. They're building awareness with, um, with their teachers through the principal admin, um, by naming U D L strategies. So part of the leadership and the message that we're having from, um, our leadership is when the principals are walking through, when we're in house with them. Just to call out those promising practices to start building that awareness. And then today we started our fall course for U D L, uh, one oh one, Diving Deep. And we had, uh, about fifteen, uh, participants, which I was very happy for. And we were starting that group, so. We've got, uh, we've got a little group from Westford Academy, Elementary and Middle, it's funny, they all sat that way. So we'll be, we'll be digging into, um, that content with that group. Do you have any specific questions about the P D calendar or is there something I missed?
Well, the, what you're seeing is the draft of the calendar that didn't include, like, when she was talking about the administrative pieces. Those are things that don't show up on the calendar here. This is what we will roll out to the staff as the dates approach that they see kind of what's going on. So if you look at like the twenty eighth and the twenty ninth, about those, the days that have already passed.
Yeah.
Um, you'll see the different things that each group was working on. There's a number of T B Ds that are still in place because we're just still trying to either. Secure resources and or figure out specifically in those, they're just very discreet groups, right? Like the nurses, for example, right? We wanna make sure that they're, that they're working on something that is, um, you know, that, that, that's beneficial and engaging for them. So we're working with Joan Mitchell, uh, to, to determine that. And there's just a couple of different examples like that in there where you'll see, you know, uh, something that, it'll just say T B D.
Yep.
Yeah. Another big initiative that Gerard's taking on is the new rollout of the I E P for the F Y twenty four, twenty five school year. He's gonna be, um, specifically working with Alan Bloom, who is a consultant. And they're, they will be participating in a train the trainer type model, um, throughout the fall. And then they'll be ready to roll it out to our staff members at a full day P D in the spring. One of the important parts would also be bringing our general education partners along in that journey. So on May sixteenth, I think it is, when we have an early release, we're really going to be, um, focusing on, uh, what does it? How might this change the dynamic of a team meeting if a, if a general education teacher notices maybe a different type of a format? Something else that needs to be addressed according to the new, um, I E P, um, just so that everybody feels more comfortable with that rollout.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee?
Yes.
I keep thinking it can't get louder and then I'm like, that's the loudest it can get.
And, and is it even red on the radar, I checked, cause I was like, are we gonna blow away?
Really?
No, it's like yellowy.
Wow. I wanna see red. The only question I had was, um, we have funding for collaborative problem solving and restorative practices. And I don't know where that fits in, are there placeholders, either mentally or physically on the calendar?
It's not on the calendar, it'll, it'll need to be, it'll have to take place outside of the calendar. So what we imagine will be, will get, we will release teachers and we'll get coverage for their classes. Because it, that, that's one of the biggest challenges that we have is the building principals are trying to do building based things. And we're pulling people from them. So we're trying to find that balance between when everybody's working on something. So we do already know that that's gonna require, you know, a couple of, for them to miss some classes in order to, to attend that training. So we'll set that up, but that is, every, they're aware of that, the two middle school principals are on board. And, and also, you know, looking to seek inform, uh, interest from some ambassadors from W A as well, too.
Great question, thanks. Any other?
Yeah, can I ask in terms of the professional development that, you know, we've already started this year, even from last year? Do we ever, ever solicit kind of any feedback from our staff who participate in, in the various and very widely varied, um, topics? Um, I think to kind of gauge, you know, their engagement, their quality of the, um. Professional development we're doing, if the topics are really, cause I, I think one of the things that again came out of, um. Your information, which we'll see later, was just when we were looking at kind of what we spend in terms of, um, professional development, which I'm. For me, it's sort of a dollar amount, it's quality over quantity. And so I, I think it would be really interesting to kind of, you know. We always view, we always review what our students are learning and the quality and, and, and looking at, you know, panorama and everything. But I don't know if we ever really do that for the learning we're doing for our own staff.
We do, McGauley can actually speak to that, cause she did it all, she did it all last year.
Yeah.
So for all of these professional development and of course with our, our trustee, Sandy at Bravo. We always have a feedback forum and attendance forum, last year, um, um, you know, we did like a, a three, two, one, three things you've learned. This year we're gonna try a now, a like, this is the what, now what, so what, what are you gonna do with it? But we do, I, I, I did get feedback from all of this stuff. And what's interesting is you see the trends in the feedback of what the T A's want, what the other stakeholders want. And really they want it to be relevant. And so I think that was the, our response to the P D calendar this year is, and last year too, is we were trying to make it more differentiated. Yet still within the umbrella of the guidelines and expectations that we have under U D L. But it is, it is, it is something we always solicit and then we try to, you know, respond to their needs. I think that, that's also part of the T B D stuff is because S L Ps, like. I could teach them curriculum stuff, but I can't teach speech. So, you know, that's where we need to get other people in our department here to support us with them, but there's always a feedback forum.
And you were making adjustments last year based on the feedback that we were getting. So even our original plan for the year, as we got into the spring, certain groups, we, you know, they rethought how, what was gonna happen. Based on the, the various things that were shared with you in the fall.
Yes, and I, we, uh, one group that I adjusted with was with the, uh, pre K, uh, Integrated Arts. I, I started with them and then with all the different needs, like the E S L department. You know, we adjusted and I, I shifted them back to the coordinators and they were able to nail the performance tasks and the rubrics there. And so we'll just keep plugging away, but yes. That's why this is like differentiated, cause we want it to be relevant, if we're saying we want it to be relevant to the kids, yes. We want it to be relevant to the adults as well.
Yep.
One of the things that might be helpful for all of you to know, if people are just ever asking you questions about it, because it, you know, impacts like the, the district as a whole. When we think about, you know, uh, cybersecurity and things that you'll hear from other places. We actually dedicate time in January for everybody to take the annual cyber training. Which is something that we just started doing a couple of years ago, is actually, instead of having people do it on their own time, actually giving everybody time on the January day. And, um, Mike Wells doesn't know this yet unless he's watching this, um, I'm gonna tell him on Tuesday, but he can find out now. We had said that Mike and I would, would actually prepare something for everybody so that they can hear directly from him. He sends us wonderful, wonderful emails, full of tons and tons and tons of information. And we thought it might be really helpful to kind of maybe get it succinct and kind of get it in one place as people are about to take the test again to remind them, okay, listen. This is why we're doing this, right? And so that's gonna be a piece of January, and it's just a little bit different, cause it's outside of the curriculum piece. So it might be something that people are ever asking you, well, what are they using the time for and what are they doing? That's actually something that I think speaks to, you know, other, other aspects that we have to be concerned about with, um, our tech. concerned about with our technology infrastructure.
Anybody on this end? No questions? I thought it was nice to see, because when we talk about sort of our STIP coming to life, right, this is, this is one of the biggest tools we have is what we are rolling out to staff. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome to stay, but you are welcome to put out an umbrella and check the radar and try to time.
Now I wish I had a drive, self-driving.
Oh, yeah, right.
Pick me up at the door.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Okay, next door of business is special education van lease renewal. So we invite Jenny up to the microphone to join us for a continued discussion based on last meeting. And everybody should have seen the very informative email from Jenny that had some points that were discussed in the last meeting. And then I did just share, you had copied me on, an individual member had asked some follow-up questions, and I shared those answers out with everybody so that if everybody has a chance in their email, or looked at it earlier, has at least that same level of starting point. But if, I don't have a preference for how we dive in tonight. If you want to start, or if we wanted to start with questions, or?
Well, I mean, maybe as a quick recap, a little bit, like to get us back in there. So we had, Jenny had worked with Jen Piper, our transportation coordinator, and Sue Thomas as well, too, in multiple ways. There's been conversations that started last year about electrifying the special education fleet. And that was something that those conversations went to the finance subcommittee as well, too, because we were looking at that, looking at the, whether it was, what would the cost be in looking at long-term planning?
Yep.
And then what happened with this specific proposal was that when we were looking at our FY 24 budget, and we had been working with Jen Piper, the concern was that all of the leases have expired. And so they worked with the company to get quotes, what it would cost to lease new vans, not all of them, but to do some of them, in a tiered approach, that would still fit within our FY 24 budget. So the idea being that we were trying to just look to see, can we be better stewards with this money to then get better vehicles on the road that would cost, would have less maintenance costs, was the thought process that was going through that. And so then when we brought that to the committee, there were a lot of different questions, right? So we started talking about, okay, well, wait a second, should we be, you know, leasing, it's a five-year lease, which is what the company had proposed to us. And so should we be leasing something for five years? And how many numbers of gas-powered vehicles? If we're looking to potentially be going into an EV, a more of an EV fleet? So a bunch of different questions like that came up. Then also just questions about the condition of the vans that we currently have on the road right now.
Right.
And so we met with Jen Piper, we talked about that. We talked specifically about how we came up with these specific vehicles that they had looked at. Jenny did a cost analysis as to what leasing fewer vans would be than what they'd actually discussed. And it was actually more expensive for us.
Yeah, it's almost the same range, around $30,000 more in our general funds operating budget if we only lease five gas vehicle instead of commit to 11 gas vehicle for five years. So the cost is very similar. So for the 11, renew 11 of those gas vans.
And that's based on then looking at the estimated maintenance costs that would not decrease, right? So that's where that cost comes in. Because at first it seems-
It's not that they're charging us more?
No, it's not that they're charging us more. It's that you're not realizing the savings on as many vehicles, because you're still going to have those same anticipated maintenance costs that have been, at this point now, historic. So the projection is, I guess it's a safe projection. So that's kind of the way that that had played out. So I think that's the recap as to, we're coming back with the information to have more conversation with you. When we did talk with Sue Thomas and with Jen Piper, there is, I think we mentioned this before, but if not, there is also a concern about the availability of the EV vans. They're just, that many aren't available. So that was another thing that would slow us down from being able to do that. So one of our options still remains to look at purchasing one or two EV vans through the capital process. Because if we actually purchase an EV van, we get access to the rebates that we don't if we lease. So Jenny had been able to cost that out and realize that purchasing it through capital would be a better investment for us than trying to lease an EV. There's concerns about our ability right now to charge more than two. So those are just the different things. So that number is the one that kind of we keep coming back to, is that if we were to move forward with EVs, we would recommend looking to do two and not all of them, and not, well, and we just don't think more would be available. And we were looking at what the, what the costs of those would be. So those were, those were a lot of the different things that we had talked about.
Before we get into questions, because I feel like there are plenty, can you just recap? You said you met with Jen to talk about, because I remember one big question from the last meeting was, what is the condition of these 11 vans that we're replacing? Are they about to fall off the road? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yep. So when I asked Jen, are you in fear that, you know, one of these is going to just go, you know, just die on us and you won't have anything to do? And she said, well, she's always in fear that one of them will just not be working, right?
Right.
And to that end, she said, I wouldn't be doing my job if we didn't have two always available, which was another question that you had, right? So there's always two that are working, that are available, that are fueled, ready to go in the event that something happens and it doesn't, a delay to get a student where they need to be. So that was something that I wanted to share with you. So that is part of our fleet, right?
Of the 18?
Yes, right? Two of them are literally backups, ready to go. So her concerns are things like the stairs, most of them have been replaced and/or in need of replacement because of just the corrosion that exists. There's dings and bumps and, you know, things like that, that she's like, it's not a cosmetic thing in terms of, you know, they do take good care of the vans, but she did mention like, but they have been, you know, you have had toddlers and through adolescence riding in these cars. And there's only so much that you can clean from some of them in some cases. So there were things like that that she was sharing, where she is concerned with the numbers, she's concerned about the mileage, she's concerned with the higher mileage vehicles. The other piece of this, that I don't know if, I think we explained it before, but if not, I'm just, I'll mention it again, is her recommendation for us to re, to get a new, to replace the three WC vans, those are our wheelchair vans. And those are more costly to maintain, and they're more limiting as to how you can use them for everybody. Her recommendation is to replace those with 10-passenger vehicles, and then shift our wheelchair transportation to DBUS, who has wheelchair. So DBUS already does some of our special education routes. So her recommendation is to get vans that we could use for all of our routes, and have specialty transportation specifically, have D that you're already hiring them to do, take back a route that they would be doing that would require a 10-passenger van, and then ask them to run one of the wheelchair routes is also part of that cost savings.
So one of my, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I should-
Questions, go ahead.
So, okay, so I had a question and a comment. One is, what are the implications of the leases being up?
So the leases being up means that they are, like, all of the maintenance is on us, right? So the leases are up, we have paid for the vans, we are now just giving the company money for vans that previously would have been rolled over into a new lease. Now, it's at a lower rate, but in essence, it's sort of a donation to the company.
But that's factored in. Well, no, we get to drive them. But yes, but that's factored into the repair costs. Okay. I mean, I'm going to say the same thing I said last time. It's hard for me, thank you for scrolling, that's exactly what I wanted to happen. It's hard for me to say, we need to do this because we're worried about maintenance cost when the projected cost of the newer vans is more, right? And so I would still say, as long as these numbers are accurate, obviously, we can't predict every maintenance cost, then there has to be, there's a premium on having a newer van, right? There's certainly, it looks better, it smells better. But I think as long as the numbers are accurate, then that, we have to figure out what that premium is. Like, is it worth $30,000 to have newer vans, even though the current vans will work for the next year? Like, we're doing this year by year. And maybe it is. Maybe we say $30,000 is the premium we want to pay because we want the vans to be newer. Or maybe it's like, no, like up until, you know, I'd pay five grand more for new vans. You know what I'm saying? Like, to me, that's the threshold because it's going to cost more. So it's hard to say, we want to do this because maintenance costs so much. But we have to look at the bottom line, which is, it's going to cost more to upgrade the vans right now. But I also think the wheelchair vans, that's an interesting thing that maybe, you know, there's something to be done there. But I'm still in the not sure it's worth it for 30K, as long as these are accurate. And these are also taking into consideration how much time, how much time we're spending here talking about it, and also how much time Jen has to spend dealing with issues that may arise that are coming here.
Can you actually scroll down, Catherine? Because my comment is the wrong. So I think that what's hard for me at looking at these numbers is that like, we're, in some ways, we're looking at a fleet, but not all the vehicles are the same.
Right.
So you have a vehicle that has 112,000 miles on it, and then you have a vehicle that has like about half of those miles. So I think that it doesn't feel nuanced to me, because I think a vehicle that has 60,000 miles on it versus a vehicle that has 112,000 miles on it, like we're not, it's not, we're not looking at them individually and what, and I think there should be like more nuance when we're talking about numbers this high. And so I think that's the thing that I have a little bit of a hard time with in saying like, all of these need to be replaced, when I think that there might be a more nuanced way to look at this. And getting us to maybe, you know, what Chris just talked about, echoing what you said about the wheelchair vans. I mean, my concern when we're looking at this and then saying like, well, we're going to cut back, is the time that kids spend on buses that are going out of district. Because if you're saying like, well, we're going to go from this many, thank you, we're going to go from this many vehicles to less than that, then you're putting kids on buses for longer when they're going to out-of-district placements. That's what we're talking about. I don't know where these wheelchair buses are going, but I was assuming they were not maybe staying in town.
Yeah, but I don't, I hear you there. And I know that Jen Piper was, is very cognizant and aware of that. So it wasn't about making somebody, making somebody's trip longer.
You're just shifting them to D, right, for the wheelchair ones?
Well, you're just shifting who's responsible for the route.
Eleven of our vans are-
But it wouldn't change, it wouldn't change the route. It would just, it would be, it would be who's driving the route instead of, yeah.
So some of our special education vans are driven by our own drivers?
No, I get that. I get that.
But it wasn't, so I'm just saying, like, I don't think anyone was suggesting that we were decreasing our, we were decreasing routes in general.
Combining.
Right. We weren't talking about combining routes. We're talking about, what happens is, is that we, with our 16 vans, because we have 18, so two are the backup, right? We have, we are supply, we are hiring and supplying the vans for 16 of the routes, but we have, we have much more than that. And so then D, we do the majority of our in-district transportation, and D does the majority of our out-of-district transportation. But they also do some of the in-district transportation as well, too.
So the numbers, I believe, because I had looked for this information earlier, and I thought it was an interesting thing, was 11 of our vans are only in Westford. And then the other, whatever, five are going to kind of Bilica. I think that was as far as, and one, and to Maric.
Merrimack.
Yeah.
Yeah. But so I was, I was surprised. It was an interesting piece of information.
So you're obviously rotating vans in two, right? Because they're all accruing mileage, so you're keeping them, you know, in transit.
I do think the other thing to note is that, I mean, clearly, they're all out of a lease. But I, it really should be kind of staggering if we are going to be leasing vans. I hate the idea of even just having them staggered across two chunks. Is that, is that?
Well, it goes back to what the, tonight's, the update that has, it kind of did what, Mari, what you were talking about when we said, okay, well, what if we looked at a lower number, and Jen still identified the three wheelchair vans, but then only identified the two that had the highest mileage. So then removed the others out of there. There was a reason between the Ford and the Dodge that we talked about before, just based on availability and based on, well, based on availability and what they were carrying. But you're right, you could then stagger again to, so that you're not changing over 50% of your fleet, right? Even at one time. And this at the same time is then that idea of like, okay, do we, do we, do we still consider moving forward with requesting the purchase of an EV van or two EV vans through the capital process, which is, which would be a different thing that would go throughout, it would take us through to school, to Springtown meeting before it was approved.
Why would we only look for two? Why not even say like, consider a pilot program of maybe four, three or four?
Was that considering the charging capacity overnight?
It is considering the number of, that we-
Ace, is it eight units out there?
We do. But it was based on like, just the conversations that we had had with Jen Piper and Sue Thomas as well, too. And there's also, there is a concern at present just about, if right now, there is a part of the, right now, our, we allow our drivers to drive, to park the vehicles at their house so that they don't have to commute to get, that's a perk, that's a part of what they have. And if we were parking even more of them here, you're, it's impacting that. So that was another part of the conversation. I mean, it's something that could still be addressed, but that was one of the reasons why I said, well, let's look and see what two would look like. I will say, a very, I think a pretty good concern when I was talking with Jen Piper, too, about just even using the EVs was just the unknown, now, I know some of you have EVs, but the unknown of, how long does it take to effectively charge one of these EV vans in the event, whereas we do know that filling a gas tank, filling a gas tank takes, you know, five, 10 minutes as opposed to, I know you can't. But I'm saying like, that's the thing that they were, that she was talking about is like, in that real, like, it's not against having it, it's just what it, it's still the unknown.
But I'm going to be honest, though, like, those are all so answerable. Like, that's not a reason-
So the mail part, isn't the mail van we got, I mean, that's similar size and has them going for-
Like, questions about charging are not a reason not to do it, because we know the, we can get the answers. Even number of chargers are not a reason not to do it, because we can add more chargers. I mean, they're not, they're not impossible, you know, to, they're not that expensive to install a charger. I'm not saying, I agree that doing it bit by bit is smart. But I'm just saying, I don't want us to put up roadblocks that are really, I think, more about institutional inertia, especially when it comes to drivers taking vans home. I mean, that's obviously a decision that we would have to make.
And what you could do. I will also just say, with all due respect, we're having these conversations with Jen and with Sue Thomas. And so I would say, if you wanted to join our conversations to talk with Sue, that would probably be helpful, because I had, that was what we were sort of batting this around, to figure out what, what is the recommendation that we're coming from. I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessarily resistance as much as it's a question of, okay, how do we plan this out? And how do we do it over time, more so?
Yeah, which makes sense.
So something I'd like to point out, if you see in the last column for mileage, those data actually was from March. So our special education vans, the daily average mileage is around 68 miles. So that means that for a whole fiscal year, we're going to drive 14,000 miles for a special education van. So now, it's already been half year past. If you're adding 7,000 to those mileage as of this point, so we have at least two or three vans, we already have like 120,000 miles. If we- Uh, if we continue those old leases for another one year or two years, so we're gonna hit one hundred thirty thousand or one hundred fifty thousand miles. You know, just for our personal experience, for our personal car, if we have a hundred fifty thousand miles, we're just gonna encounter lots of problems for the vehicles. That means the repair and maintenance costs could go up like from seventy-eight thousand to a hundred thousand, uh, for the cost. That's additional twenty or thirty thousand over there for repair and maintenance costs. That's what we have to think about. That's why we want to consider a compromise-like approach at this point. Maybe we think about three wheelchair vans and also two other vans with higher mileage, which is closer to a hundred twenty thousand miles.
But just, when we use D for then those extra, um, drives, those special education van, um, runs. Like, what's the cost? I mean, is it costing us more than having our own van and our own driver?
Yes.
Yes.
For each ru, the individual route?
Yeah.
Okay.
So by taking, removing our three wheelchair accessible vans, we now leave ourselves with no vans in district that are wheelchair accessible. And we are now having to spend with D bus extra.
But we're already spending.
We're already spending, right. And so I think what Jen is saying is that we can at least have more bodies in the other van that we might own and have more flexibility.
And she said the hi, maintenance was higher for those, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, I was wondering, I mean, when you say like the lease is expired and we're, we're, we're still paying, we would have bought them by now, right?
Right.
So, um, is, is this vendor open to, does purchase, does purchasing at some point ever make sense in this equation?
So histori- historically, that's what used to happen.
Okay.
And then the district went into leasing.
Okay.
And for a long time, we were in a very scheduled pattern in terms of these four vans get turned in, we get four more. And it was, it was just part of the rotation and several years ago, that whole back and forth fell, um, apart.
Okay.
What was typically Courtney, the kind of the reason that you would put them in was that they either was just hit a certain age or they hit a certain mileage? Or what was that kind of?
I, I believe it was just agreed upon upfront, just like you would go and purchase a vehicle and say, okay, I have this vehicle for three years, for two years, for four years.
It was just a leasing.
And so that was just upfront and, and they were doing maintenance for us. We were still responsible for little maintenance things, but you know, if anything big happened, it was still covered. So in that situation, if we had a van that went off the road, then we would have a replacement van that would come to us, which was helpful. That we didn't have to worry about going and renting one or contracting out to D bus.
Yeah, Sean.
I think I'm torn on this because I, I mean, I agree with a lot of the sentiment that was said regarding, you know. I like the idea of not having, replacing something until it's absolutely necessary to do so, right? Like, because it's just, just good budgeting, right? Um. At this, and then I think that there's, there's a cost associated with maintenance that we're not considering, right? Like, it seems like there's two backup vans, but what happens if three vans go out, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's strategically, right? Or if something needs to be fixed, then it takes two weeks to do.
Start combining routes.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, but at the same token, these aren't like super old cars, right? I mean, some of them are twenty seventeen models, things like that. Um, and then the reason why I'm torn, too, is because if we think of the, the clientele that they're serving, right, which is our special ed population, like, I'll be blatantly honest. I'm, you know, I'd, I'd rather us have nice vans for our special ed students particularly, if they're taking them out of district, something like that, so. I, I'm torn on this. I think at minimum, if we're gonna make a decision tonight, I mean, it seems like the consensus, at least that I've heard, is that the wheelchair vans, are we gonna make a decision on the wheelchair vans? Because it seems like those are of, um, does need some help, particularly with the wheelchair lifts, right? But I, I don't know. It, it just, I, I'm not hearing a lot of reasons why, besides the high mileage and the potential maintenance costs savings, as to like why this is necessary now, right? Um, so, yeah.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Um, does D have capacity to step into those wheelchair routes, right? Like immediately, or?
Jen told me that they did, yes.
Okay, all right, great. Just wanted to factor that in as you're talking. Go ahead, Sean, if you had a more.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's it. I mean, I'm not, I, I understand the argument for it and I understand the argument against it, and I guess I'm.
And, I just wanted to clarify, I heard you correct, um, Jenny, that if, if we only chose to do five vans for leasing. The cost is higher essentially as opposed to doing it as a group of eleven.
Uh, it's not higher, it's very similar.
It's very similar.
Yeah, very similar. It's around thirty thousand dollars.
It's, it, I have, I, I have, I have something that's a little bit different than what you're showing, and I don't know, but I thi, I think Jenny put in, both in there. You put the, the, the update in there that has the five.
The updated one, five one, just send it to you and Jen, but not send it to school committee because we don't know what we're gonna discuss tonight.
Oh, okay. So, so I can tell you that the, the, if you just, if, well, actually, if you show that screen again, I'll show you which ones it is, which ones it.
Which ones?
Um, so if you, if you look at the three wheelchair.
Yeah.
Vans and then line eight and line six, so line eight is the hundred and twelve thousand and line six is the hundred and two thousand. So, so Mari, when I told you, oh, they did that with the five, I'm looking at something different that has the, she, she just has a different green piece on there, right? So when, when that comes down, when you, when, when you add, add all those numbers up, the, the, the overall cost, because the difference is thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Versus if you scroll down, this says it's twenty-nine something. I think it was twenty-nine, wasn't it, Jen?
Twenty-nine thousand four hundred and three.
So it's twenty-nine, so, so we, I said it was an increase. I thought it was more of an increase when we first looked at it, so I said it was, it was an increase to do less. And now Jenny's saying, but the increase isn't significant, it's four thousand dollars. Um, so, I, I just said that correctly, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So if you look at it, because the maintenance in, in G, column G, line twenty-four, where it says twenty-five thousand dollars. That number goes up to sixty-three thousand dollars, right? For the maintenance.
I know, you're doing five.
If, because you've held on to others, so that's the maintenance, that's the repair and maintenance line, so that goes up to an estimated sixty-three thousand dollars. The, the D bus, the contracted services with D, um, goes up, but the, but the costs, the new lease costs go down. And the overall change ends up being thirty, so it's thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So it's a difference of four thousand dollars. If we were to lease the five, five vans instead of the others.
Am I throwing something in the, the spinner that works by saying, could we do one more meeting at this? Because I think.
That's a wrench for, for the rest of us.
Sorry, a wrench.
They gave, they gave us an, they gave us an extension because we told them that you were meeting tonight?
Yeah.
So we had, we had the extension for, but.
On the quotes.
On the, for the quotes. The quotes would just change, potentially.
How much?
And, um, merchant fleet actually approached us several times, trying to find a resolution about all those eighteen vehicles, they already up to the lease term. So they want us to give them an answer for all of those vehicles.
Because they want to sell us eight vehicles.
Yeah.
Right, right.
They want us to.
I, between, uh, between college and law school, I sold cars. So I'm telling you, I think we're fine. We're selling eighteen, we're buying eighteen vehicles. I know, it's a, it's like a thing that people don't know about me. Um, I think that they, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna lease eighteen vehicles from them, I think that they will be excited about that, and that's why they're reaching out to us. But I think that, I mean, I, I think, I think the thing that is concerning to me is that when we're estimating these like repair and maintenance costs, like, again, we're assuming that all of the vehicles are in the same shape, and that's just not true.
Right.
Um, and so the math is not, you know, it's, it's an estimate, and I, and I trust that you've like looked back at our past stuff. But we're in a, we're in a tight budget situation.
Who, who currently does our maintenance? Is that somebody in town?
Uh, yes.
Somebody, it's a, well, it's a, it's an independent, they're in Lowell. I believe the garage is in Lowell.
One guy garage.
But not at, oh.
But it's not even a town.
It's not a, it's not a, it's a, it's an independent, it's an independent company, yeah.
It's, it's, it's an independent biz, business.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I mean, I would do, I mean, you're saying it's individual. I would do what I do with my cars is, you know, we have X number of cars. I would look at each of them and say, how much is it costing me to lease this car this year? How much is it gonna cost me to maintain it, best estimate? Factoring in that I'm gonna put in twenty thousand miles on the car in the course of the year. Like, I, you have to factor that in upfront to do, and then say, which is greater? And then add, again, add that premium, like, well, I, I'm willing to pay another two percent to get the new car because it's nicer, you know, it looks better, it's, um.
Because this, this car here, it has forty-five thousand miles on it.
Right, I, I, I would expect we would do that anyway. I would expect in ma- maintaining a fleet, that we would be looking vehicle by vehicle and saying, is it time for this vehicle?
But it, the.
This vehicle picked, because it's one of the older ones with one of the higher mileage again.
It's a, because it's a Dodge Caravan.
It's the four transits that you, we're looking at, right? Which are the higher capacity, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just the top, the top ones, yeah.
The Dodge Caravans are smaller in capacity, if I'm correct.
I do know that, I, I do think that one of, I think one of the concerns coming from the transportation department is, based on what Courtney has just shared with us, too, is the fact that, oh, you know, before, definitely before the pandemic, and I don't know how, when it happened before then, but there was a regular turning over of vehicles. And so there was a regular just understanding that you were leasing vehicles, and so every so many years, it was going to be turned over. And now we're just, now we have all of them. And now, while we look at those numbers and we think, okay, those don't seem that old. I think they've been waiting for some movement because none of these vehicles have changed. So there's that concern about, well, this is an opportunity to be, to, to start that practice again so that we can be in that, um, have something that's in a cycle.
The question is, though, is that the right practice to start?
Yes.
You know, what's the fiscally responsible decision to make, obviously with, um, you know, duty of care to our staff and students? But then also bearing in mind that we, as a school committee, last year passed a policy saying we would be looking at electrifying, um, our vans. And, you know, tying us into eleven vans or potentially eighteen vans for another five, seven years. Um, you know, without a kind of a more concerted effort to say, okay, maybe we do two vans this year, two va, like as in purchase. Because I do believe my research shows as well that it's better value to purchase an EV van than to lease an EV van.
Yep.
Um, so, um, my question is, is, I appreciate that this is, is something that we've, just historically has always been done. But ne- knowing as well the budget task force and everything and, and conversations that are currently happening.
Yeah.
You know, can we look at this through different lengths and figure out maybe a better plan that feels a little bit more mindful, um, you know?
I, yeah, possible. I do think, I, I think even changing it down and looking at five or even just talking about the wheelchair vans, and then knowing that we are talking about going through the capital process to purchase EV vans.
Yeah.
I do wanna be clear that I think this process has been very mindful, so it has been very thoughtful. And I just want to challenge all of you with, at the beginning of the evening, we were having a conversation about the quality of our buildings, right? And what we've learned about the feasibility study. And so I just don't, at the same time, wanna necessarily kick something down the road. Because right now, we have, we do have, th- this is basically within our budget for FY twenty-four. And some of the issues that we are looking at, that we're all now dealing with is because superintendents and school committees of the past have not dealt with maintenance issues as they arose. I'm just, I'm just saying it's like an interesting thing. I'm just throwing that out there as a part of the conversation. Because I don't disagree with any of the things that anybody's saying. I just feel like it's something to consider.
Do you think it's worth, do you think there's any wiggle room to proposing adding the two EV potential purchases to the October? We just had our capital check in, and we've got one more meeting, I think, before, like if we had quotes and stuff.
I mean, we, yeah, and we, do we have updated quote? The, most of those EV quotes expired in the spring, but.
Right, they expire on May, those EV quotes.
Yeah.
So if we want to purchase those EV, we need to request updated quotes from merchant fleet.
Yeah.
And we don't even know if they still have those inventory in stock.
That's true.
October sixth.
We were trying to check with them how many EVs they have, because due to the global supply chain issue, we don't know how many EV vans they have.
Okay.
Because we checked with the other company, they only have one or two.
Yeah.
And, uh.
It could just be a waiting period.
Right, could be a waiting time.
It would just be interesting to me to figure out if, if we're talking about two EVs as purchases. And maybe it helps feel like it's alleviating some of it if those were in process for October town meeting versus March town meeting.
Now, are you saying then, pick your two worst vans to replace, Heather?
Yeah.
Right, five, about two or five.
Well.
I'm saying if we do two EVs to replace our two worst vans.
Two EVs to, to, to two worst vans, right.
I was, and I was actually thinking like on the same lines, whether if you still wanted to consider the wheelchair piece.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
And then the idea being is like, I, I even feel like waiting until spring to find out if the EV process, that it's still, like, it doesn't have to be March or, or, I mean, you, you're right.
Right, yeah, you just have to.
You could do it, if we had the information in October, it'd certainly be helpful. But if that just was part of the plan, that then even the five that, that I mentioned to you could really be, are we really just leasing three and then trying to replace two with potential EVs, which would also kind of move us in a.
Right, it's an incremental approach.
Yeah.
Good face, yeah.
So, I also want to add something about the funding source, because we are not thinking about adding this additional thirty thousand into general fund. Because we do have sufficient reserve in our transportation revolving account. Uh, I checked this afternoon for fiscal year twenty-three, transportation revolving accounts ending balance is six hundred ninety thousand. For fiscal year twenty-two, the ending balance for transportation revolving account was three hundred sixty-six thousand. So the reason is last year, we received upper fund support supplement our transportation. So we didn't need to use so much, six hundred fifty-five thousand.
Yeah.
To offset from transportation revolving account for the general fund's operating budget. Just, you know, another piece of the information here for the funding source.
Well, and just thinking out loud, too, that since capital, you're really going through the motions of the purchase, and does this make sense embedding it? But it's not the funding source.
That's right.
So that the funding source could still be ours if it was the purchase.
Oh.
The purchase.
Wouldn't it go through the capital, the town capital budget?
Well, no, it's.
The purchase will be usually is cash free cash.
Town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. But I do think, hearing that transportation revolving balance, I mean, knowing what we know, that we've got a bus contract coming up.
Right.
And that it's gonna be a, a step change that, you know, we've done that in the past with reviews revolving and things to, to gradually ease things in. So I could see that helping soften that blow.
Be helpful later, yeah. I was thinking about that, too. There might be other uses for that money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, yes, it still leaves us at a.
Do we have a plan?
Okay, I think.
I, I, I would like to voice support of investigating, trying to look at doing two purchases.
Two EVs. Yep. And we have time before the next capital meeting, which is October sixth, to see if we can get two quotes, if they have two in inventory, if there's appetite in the capital planning committee to put those on for October. And then maybe coming back to this committee one more time with a plan, what the numbers would work out to only replace three, the wheelchair ones. Is that what I'm hearing? Is that, so that would be five, but we wouldn't know the full answer on two, the two EVs until October town meeting?
Sorry, I'm just confused, though. If, do we need to replace the three wheelchair vehicles if they're being moved into D, though?
I think she's saying.
Well, we need, yeah. Because the whole idea is that we're, we would be, we would be replacing them with a ten-person passenger van.
Their high maintenance.
Got it, got it.
And we would be taking on that route from D, and they would be taking on the wheelchair route.
All right, all right, yeah.
So. And to, and to like, and to roll those, roll the dice on those for another year. And to, and to like, and to roll those, roll the dice on those for another year with potential higher maintenance costs, right? That's what I'm hearing.
And I think what Jenny's about to tell us, and potentially higher lease costs, because that, that quote from merchant will expire, so we, we don't know what it'll, what they'll bring to us, but, you know, it's a.
Yeah. Okay. I think they wanna sell vans. Okay.
They wanna move them.
I mean, they, they wouldn't, it was mentioned in the email, you know, they could, they could repossess all the, I mean, is that really a reality that, you know, they would take them all?
Oh, that they're gonna take the vans back?
They would take all the vans away from us, I mean, I don't, I don't, I think they would wanna operate right with us and.
It, it costs five grand to repossess a vehicle with legal fees and stuff.
You're not gonna repossess it.
I mean, I'm, you know, so I, I think.
Also, they, they're getting all the gains right now, and none of the, the hassle of having to maintain them, or, you know, it's.
I, I thi- I think in incremental, you know, and, and maybe, you know, good faith, we're, we're purchasing two EVs, we're, you know, we're, we're trying to replace some of the fleet on, on new leases, and we are working towards that solution that's in the middle somewhere, where, we're, we're kinda solidifying all these goals of ours, you know, that we set in policy and.
Right. Do you think it's an option to, I mean, obviously we're gonna move, we're hopefully gonna move ahead with these five vans in total. But that we could actually create over the next few weeks or months, a kind of a more cohesive plan for how to update, renew all eighteen of them, because they're all out.
I was gonna propose that, um, that could be a, one of the fall topics for the finance, that could be.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Love that.
I'd like to take that.
Love that so much.
Love that. As the, as two, I, I mean, I.
Marius have to say it as a car?
That's true, this is right in your wheelhouse.
Yeah, you did mention that.
Cause nobody ever expects it. That's like a dinner party fact.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I think we're good, at least for full committee next steps, and we're good here.
Is that what you were gonna mention when I, when, cause you had raised your hand, and then I said, I think Jenny's about to remind us that the, that if we don't make a decision tonight, all of these numbers would be different the next time we come back.
Oh, yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah, and it takes a long time for merchant lead to respond to us.
That's true too.
Yep.
Okay.
Right, even for a single quote.
Really?
If, if, so if we renew these three vans tonight, when would we see those, these vans on our, on the road, like when would?
So in the beginning, they notify us, we better do those renewal before the school semester starts. So now we already, like, half month into the semester. So I don't know how much interruption we will have.
No, as it, but how long would it take to get the vans?
That, that's, they, they seem to make it seem like, they, if we, if we had moved earlier, they were available.
Yes.
That's the way I, that's the way I interpret the interruption.
It seems like that, but if they have other clients, I'm not sure, because they are not telling us all the information.
It's a good question.
Cause the other thing is, if, if they're telling us there's a six-month wait for three of them, but we know, or maybe after finance subcommittee worked their magic, and we also decide next year, we're gonna do another three, or another, whatever.
And that we have to spend maintenance on them during the six months and then change them.
Exactly, that, is it, you know, are we then in a better position to, um,
Mm-hmm.
hold off and do a, a bigger order, I, I don't know, it's, it's too many, too many thoughts running in that.
Um, I, I guess I just want clarity then, are we authorize, is there consensus to authorize tonight three renewals for the wheelchair vans? I'm seeing head nods.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should take
Should we vote?
A motion to authorize, uh, Director of Finance and Superintendent to execute a five-year lease of three vans as specified?
Two, three fifty year transit wheelchair?
Yes.
Yeah. And you wanna do so moved?
Oh, so moved?
Yeah, thanks. And then a second?
A second.
Great, thank you.
And I was lost in the spreadsheet, and, so I think somebody might have asked this, but we're, we're, we're saying that instead of having D do that? Cause we started the conversation with, we would transition those to D, or you're saying, replace them with non-wheelchair, with non-wheelchair, thank you.
I think that. Cause I think the.
We actually wanna say, we're replacing those.
Right, but I felt like the motion didn't necessarily reflect that.
Say that, so we might need to amend the motion, I think you're right.
Non-wheelchair vans.
Okay. As amended, with non-renew, with non-wheelchair vans. I, I meant, what I was intending was that those would come off
Yes.
the road, and we would renew, renew those leases with, or maybe it's not renew, maybe they're slower.
Replace.
Ten passenger.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you keep, yeah. Okay, yes, okay, thank you, um.
Replace.
Replace, yes, with, um, other non-wheelchair vans. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, everybody's clear on that, as mud, good?
Yeah. If you want clarity, you actually have them as lines ten, eleven, and twelve in the spreadsheet, with the VIN numbers.
Okay, okay, great.
I can give you the VIN numbers, yeah.
Right, then it's like, we are, we are replacing those, you're authorizing us to replace those.
Okay.
And, um.
Yep, no, well, there's still discussion.
I was about to say, then do we do a second vote then on doing the two EVs, or that, is that just a?
I think you need more information on that.
A information, yeah.
We need more information.
You need more information on that.
Okay, so we're taking a vote on switching, we're getting three new leases for three new vans, and shifting wheelchair routes to DBUS.
That's good.
Great, all those in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Progress.
Okay. Um, and keep us updated if you hit roadblocks with the EV vote quotes for the next capital meeting.
Okay.
Not updated spreadsheet actually as well, and could you share that with the rest of the committee as well, just so that we have?
Sure. Uh-huh, yeah, I will.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you so much, Jenny.
Thank you.
We're on me, okay. Um, so next, uh, business item is a, yes, you've seen this at least three times, four times maybe.
Just gonna stop for one minute, cause I know this very well.
So, you may, I'm sure some of you have heard us talking about this, but the Budget Task Force work, one of the biggest chunks of that was doing some hardy benchmarking. And, uh, so I took that on sort of from the schools' perspective, there's another effort that was digging into the town departments. Um, and Catherine had a great point of bringing that to the seven of us, um, to just kind of level set before we start a budget season, and to just share what we've found. I will say too, I, I had a quick mental thought, which I already lost, was to, um, share with you guys that one of the conversations that we had in Budget Task Force last week, or, sorry, I don't remember what week it was. You might, you probably are all familiar with the conversation of how much money of the, from the town goes to the schools, is it enough, is it too much, right? With that same conversation has played out, we get that question a lot, right? And one of the recent Budget Task Force meetings I was really happy with was we walked through, what is the right way to talk about how much money goes to the schools? So, one, we talked about like how that percentage of new growth is a number that has come up in previous budget discussions, right? Like, the schools get seventy-six or seventy-five percent about, of new growth. And if you're familiar, right, the new growth is after you've paid your, um, like the, the must haves, right? So like OPEB and all the, like, these are the bills that have to get paid. Here's our sort of wiggle room for the new year, and there's a chart that usually makes it into the budget presentations that says, okay, well, of this new wiggle room, you know, three-fourths of it is going to the schools, and only one-fourth is going to towns, and people love to sort of repeat that, right? And so what we were talking about as a task force is that that's really only one snapshot. So, it's not that helpful to keep repeating that, because people hear that seventy-six percent, or the seven, I keep saying that because I think it was last year's number, but that big chunk number, and think that that is representative of what is actually going to the schools. So to flip that, another way we talked about it was, if you sit through town meeting, the approval, the line item of the full budget says education, you know, however many millions, um, and there's a breakdown per, by percentage, and that line item, people like to say, well, that's the number that goes to the schools. But that's not accurate either, because that doesn't include all of the shared expenses with town staff of benefits, insurance, and it doesn't include debt service, right? So blanchard roof and those things that still support schools. So, um, as part of this effort, I'm jumping ahead, don't, don't go yet, um, as part of, this was also like tied into the, some of this data, and I'll get to that slide, but my point is that this has been really productive, bless you, productive, fruitful conversations that feel like things that we have always wrestled with, that now we're having at sort of this bigger, um, stage, I guess, for the conversations. So, um, some of this, you know, I created this slideshow for the Budget Task Force, um, I've shared it at, um, I shared it over the summer with leadership team. And so some of this is really starting with ground zero to talk about, um, thing, terms that I was gonna use during the slides that not everybody knows. Obviously with this audience, you already know what DART and adjacent means. Um, but I thought it was helpful to just see the breakdown of who we compare ourselves to, and what their configuration is, right? So, we have nine buildings, we talk about like our infrastructure can sometimes limit us, and sometimes it's a boon, and sometimes it's a blessing. And so seeing all the other communities and how they break down was at least interesting for me, and it's in one place now. But you guys all know what DART and adjacent is, so we can move on to the next slide. So the next slide shows, um, our student populations, and, and this is, and the years are sort of different depending on the data sets, so you just kinda gotta roll with the specific numbers, but um, this is enrollment, showing low income percentage, students with disabilities, ELL percentage, and class sizes. This is how DESI creates our DART districts, so it makes sense that these are close. And I'll remind you that the DART districts are the ones with the underlined, and then the other ones that are not underlined are the adjacent, ge- geographical, adjacent to Westford. So all of them together are what we, what we consider our sort of peer districts. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Enact and Boxborough is both.
Enact and Boxborough is in both groups, yeah, okay. So then, um, as I was going through this data, I was like, okay, well, that's showing us a snapshot of who we're educating, who shows up at our doorstep to, um, service, but they come from those, it, it doesn't tell the whole story of what the communities look like, so when you look at this kind of snapshot of the profi- community profiles, you don't have to even, I mean, I'll send this out, but, um, the couple of things that stand out are that we are actually really close to the median for single-family tax bill. Um, we're really close to the median for, um, income per capita. We are an outlier for total road miles, so, and land area, which is kind of like one of those things that you think, you, you know if you're driving from Jack Walsh to, to Nav, but, um, it's nice to see in this data set to be like, okay, there are differences that we might be seeing in our budget that are just a, a function of how Westford is. Um, and the other interesting thing I added here was in that second column, what I, um, one thing I had heard sort of anecdotally was, oh, well, Westford has more students per, um, per, like in the population, more, more of the school age, uh, grouping. So I took DESI enrollment and compared it to the town population, because you, you know, the census gives you a number for that, but you don't know if they're counting charter schools, out of district, school choice, whatever. So I just did DESI enrollment at, versus the town employ, uh, town population. And again, we are above the median for that value as well.
Just under twenty percent?
Yes, yeah, Westford has about, yeah, nineteen percent, and our peer towns are fifty.
The median is.
We're the highest too, right? Uh, except for Winchester.
Winchester's just higher.
Chester's a smidge higher.
Yep, yeah. So again, they're, just kind of to understand, DESI puts us in that bucket for DART to say that our students look the same, but, you know, we're, the communities that are behind those schools may not all be the same, so.
And all of the, the good thing is all of this data's going to be in the report.
Yes.
Which is great, cause if we, we had, you had created a wonderful handout that we used at the two tables that had slices of the data.
Yeah.
And I know one of the things that, one of the tables that I was at, they were questioning, well, but the, the house values in those other communities are, and so I'm like, what, no, we have data about that. I'm like, I can't remember exactly what it is, but we have data that's gonna show you where all that compares as well too.
Yeah, yeah, there's all data, so much data. Yeah, um, okay, and then so, another way, another comparison metric that DESI uses is to look at, um, foundation budget, and I don't wanna get too much in the weeds to keep us on time here, but basically, if you look at the third column there, um, what the state tracks, how much your spend, how much district spent over the required minimum amount. And you can see that like, I, I wanna say the state average, yeah, I have it here, the state average is twenty-nine percent over, so one twenty-nine. Westford is spending one thirty-six, so thirty-six percent over this minimum. The median for this benchmarking group is forty-two percent over. But what's interesting, the takeaway here is that we're in this bucket with places like Wellesley that's spending seventy-seven percent over, or even Concord and Carlisle are spending another a hundred percent on top of what their minimum is, right? So, we might all have the same sort of snapshot of students in front of us, but all of these districts have different means for how they're funding. Okay, so that lead-in I did earlier about how to determine how much money is going to the schools culminated in this slide. And what this captures is, um, benefits and insurance, it does not include grants and debt service. So what I specifically looked at here was the general fund, school-supported expenses from the Department of Ed end-of-year reporting. So whatever that number was, that, that DESI says, here's how much you spent from your, not your grants, not your revol- revolving funds, your general fund, and compared that to each town's total expenditures. And we are at sixty-eight percent. So sixty-eight percent of all of our town total expenditures can be lumped into a school-supported bucket.
So you're taking Westford Public Schools, health insurance, employee benefits, and pulling those over into this.
Sixty-eight percent.
Abortion. Because DESI accounts for that, so across all, across all districts.
Right, so.
So that's already, that we already have.
This is as apples to apples as you can get, yeah. The median is sixty-two percent, so we're a little above, so when people say, oh, we spend less on schools than our neighbors, or more on schools than our neighbors, this is as definitive an analysis as we feel like we can get, yeah.
What, what's our number?
Sixty-eight.
Percent.
Sorry, good point, I'll call that out into the text.
Of, of the total town budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay, it's committed to the school book.
You'll notice too that I start dropping Concord, Carlisle off some of these analyses is because, analyses, because Carlisle has like one elementary, Concord has like two elementaries, and then they have a regional high school, so it was almost too complicated, and some of this was just to get a snapshot and move forward to account for some of that. The next one, the next slide is, um, just for my own curiosity, curiosity's sake, and I've gotten some good feedback on sharing this information, so it's not to lead one way or the other, but it was just a snapshot of, we're comparing ourselves to these other districts, what have they done to cope with the Prop two and a half, you know, limit, um, over the last fifteen years. So what I took away from this, and again, I'm sorry, it's an eye chart, but, um, is that it's not as prevalent as maybe we anecdotally hear that, that overrides are happening in all these other districts, it's, it's actually not necessarily as common as, um, as you might, or as, I was surprised to see this. And some of them have specific reasons, right? Like they're not all like general fund override, they're not all school overrides, they're, they're just from the, um, Division of Local Services Municipal Data Bank, which is how they crank out all their data, this was the last, these were the overrides in the last fifteen years.
Did you come across, cause it makes me wonder, looking at Concord's spending over foundation budget, at two hundred, you know, or two hundred of foundation budget, did they do a gigantic override before two thousand eight, that, and, I'm, I'm just wondering how they're even able to do that within Prop two and a half?
I think it, well, like, there's so many other nuances, right? Like they don't have a recreation department in their town. So like their town side services might be smaller than Westford's to account for more spending to go to their schools, right?
Yeah.
So, this is only the school side of the analysis, but, yeah, those are kind of the questions that we've.
But all, these are all overrides though, these aren't just school, these are town overrides.
They're all overrides, yes.
That were successful.
That were successful.
Yes, so.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay, so then, um, part of the Budget Task Force, there's other members of the Budget Task Force that have been digging into the town budgets, and one thing we have learned that we continually sort of, at least I'm thankful for, is that DESI regulates school spending so, so much that it lends itself a little bit more to these comparisons, right? Like if you look at town budgeting, the buckets on the town side, you know, sometimes dispatches in police, sometimes dispatches in public safety, so you can't, it's not as easy to do apples to apples when you're looking at the town departments, um, but DESI makes it a, a little bit more easier, easier. So, when I was trying to compare sort of the internal Westford Public School's spending to our peer district. So, when I was trying to compare sort of the internal Westford Public Schools' spending to our peer districts, I decided to use per pupil expenditure. Um, and some thoughts we wanna just air out while we think about that is, um, you know, it does normalize for enrollment, which is great, but not, not everything is still equal, right? So we could have num- a different number of buildings than somebody with the same enrollment, which could have impact in our utility bills, or our school leadership, or the number of libraries we have. Um, something we've already covered in the other slides was that when you're looking at per pupil, you're showing sort of what choices they're making with their funding and which buckets they're putting it in. But all the districts have a different starting line, right? They're, they have a different wealth and ability to pay. And even with as, as regulated as this is and as apples-to-apples as we feel like it is, there are still some differences. Like Westford pays for our student and staff Chromebooks from free cash, so that doesn't show up in any of these because, again, this is showing general fund expenditures. So Chromebooks come out of a totally different one-time-use sort of cash that check. Um, and regional districts just have a little bit more nuances to it, too. Um, some of these districts might have their own bus fleet and we're comparing ourselves to them, right? So there are still differences. For per pupil spending, um, it's important to keep in mind too that all funding sources are accounted for here. So municipal appropriation, grants, revolving funds, school choice, circuit breaker, everything is captured here. And when they calculate the per pupil spending, they leave out community services, fixed assets and debt service. And the last point I wanted to make was that out-of-district expenses do not have a separate PPE. So you can have a total per pupil spending and then you can have an in-district per pupil spending, that's, that's normalized by your in-district pupils. And then you have out-of-district expenses, but they don't normalize that for, by pu- by pupil because you could have low-cost school choice and charter school placements versus high-cost special education placements. So it's not a fair comparison to, to boil that down per student. But those out-of-district expenses are reflected in the total. Are we good? Any questions?
Do you wanna take a break?
Yeah.
Break.
No, I'm trying to get through it, so, alright, so, and we'll, we'll hang on the next slide for a minute, great, okay. So there are more, there's like.
Wait, real quick, and I might have, again, I sometimes get my own thoughts and I, I don't hear everything.
That's okay.
Per pupil, per pupil expenditures includes benefits and insurance, retirement insurance?
Per pupil, correct.
Alright.
Benefits and insurance, yes.
Even though our school budget, we have, so there are function codes for that, but in our school budget, we don't.
We, we don't approve them, but they are in the end-of-year reporting.
Right, right.
But for, but for the general listener, when, when they say Westford's per pupil expenditure is fifteen thousand dollars, that's, that doesn't include, that, that, that's not, that's, that's not what that breakdown necessarily is talking about. What, what, um, that's, that's taking the overall budget and dividing it by the number of pupils that you have. What, what, um, what Valerie's talking about is that you can take all of those, you can take all of that money and they will show you the function code here, X amount was spent on benefits and that'll go across all school districts and that'll be the similarity, does that make sense?
But you're saying in the total, our benefits, insurance included, yes.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay. No, I got it.
Okay.
I thought I was making, I'm like, no, I just confused the issue, sorry.
It's okay, so again, this is, this is a slide to stay on because, um, there are, so one, there's a member of the task force that's helping to visualize data with a tool called Tableau and it sort of, um, does a statistical analysis to show clusters and quartiles of your data. So you can see where we fall, spoiler alert, we fall in the lowest cluster for almost every category here except for pupil services. And there's a little bit of, there's, there's a little bit of numbers that are off in some of those graphics, so I don't necessarily wanna spend a whole lot of time there. Also, I don't know that we're at a point yet where we're publicly talking about efficiency ideas or where we're gonna dive in a little bit deeper. So, really, this is kind of, um, the takeaway. So each one of these function codes corresponds to a per pupil expenditure and compared to the, um, median of our benchmarking group. So you can see that we are, and I'm, uh, the middle column is just kind of a hint. It's not comprehensive, it's not everything, but it's a hint of like what's sort of captured in that function code title. You can see that thirty-seven percent below median for administration, that's basically central office. Instructional leadership, all of our principals, department heads, um, that's five percent below median. Our teachers, all instructional salaries and stipends, two percent below median. Other teaching services, that's OTPT, speech, substitutes, paraprofessionals, that's seven percent below median. Professional development, so instructional coaches, some districts even have a director of professional development. Costs, expenses to have somebody come in or some, or, you know, to cover your staff to go out, that's seventy-six percent below median. Instructional materials, equipment and technology, that's textbook supplies. And again, here is where you would see Chromebooks, but because that might be contributing to why we're so below median there. Guidance and testing, that's all of our counselors and assessments, that's eleven percent below median. I'm gonna jump for a minute, operations and maintenance, custodial and utilities, that's five percent below median. And then benefits and fixed charges, that's retirement and insurance. And it's also includes, um, the town charge backs for when we get, for when any of our buildings make an emergency call. Those show up in that, um, in that line item, so that's nine percent below median. And then I'll circle back to the one that's above median, which is pupil services. So that's our medical health services, our food services and transportation and athletics. And those, that category is twenty percent above median. I don't, I mean, built into that, um, don't change your slide yet, but, um, built into that, we are in the second highest quartile for transportation and the second highest quartile for food services. So that's kind of what's leading to that total chunk to be above median.
A big town with lots of roads and really hungry kids.
And one transportation company going, versus turning our bids.
I would point out, and I don't know, I mean, I, I don't remember professional development, like what the, what the total is, but some of these are bigger buckets in general, so like the seventy-six percent professional development, that's a smaller lot.
Good point.
Grouping than teachers and, you know.
It could be between ten thousand and five thousand.
Exactly, it might not be a big absolute number.
Yep, yep.
But still, but still.
And it's also like even like that, that could also be when we dive in to look at the twenty percent above to get more specific about it. Like we know that, okay, well, our, our food services program is doing very well.
Right.
And that we know that they have the recommended amount of, um,
Reserves.
Reserve that DESI says that we should have, and I'm assuming that maybe a lot of people don't.
Right.
You know, and that, that could also be, that could be the difference there.
Any other reactions or questions here?
Well done.
Is there more there?
There, so, so you can.
It's like ten out of twenty-three, I mean.
Yeah, no, we're not going through all of them, so each one I, like, so here's our total. Um, again, like, don't spend too much time on the actual numbers. This number is correct, seventeen thousand three hundred and fifteen is our FY twenty-five, twenty-two total per pupil expenditures. And only Chelmsford and Holliston are lower. And then you could step through the other ones just to show the visuals, but again, I'm not really gonna speak to each one of those. The Tableau tool is really cool, it like color coordinates them, I'll send this out and we can retroactively add it to the packet. If you go down to slides twenty-two and twenty-three, I apologize, I didn't send this to you ahead of time.
That's okay.
I did get questions at the retreat, those last two, twenty-two and twenty-three. So I got questions at the retreat about, because per pupil doesn't break down into the out-of-district chunks, I got some questions about that at the retreat that I was mulling over for tonight's presentation. And, um, I just wanted to have something to share, but it's not as easily readable, obviously, as like the color-coordinated things. And what I learned from looking at these is that the range, I mean, the numbers vary so widely um, from, from, in each of these function codes. But what you can see is that, um, a, a median, because there were so many outliers, I didn't think mean was appropriate. For each one of these function codes.
The median of the total?
This looks wrong, sorry about that, this was literally a couple hours ago.
That's the exact same, too.
Oh, yeah.
That's that those are the same numbers.
Alright, well, this one's different though.
That'll be different, yeah. Maybe, maybe we're the median though.
Okay. I apologize, I apologize.
But you're saying that the median of the total.
Well, yes, so the, that column was supposed to be the me-
It'd be surprising if it was the exact, but.
Yes, the median of the, um, it could be though, it might just mean that we are.
We are smacked in the middle.
I was trying to, I, and I'm open to this, is that I'm trying to find a way to talk about out-of-district expenses. It's definitely a point that we've gotten feedback on how to talk about that, how to show that, how to compare that. It's not as easy to compare, right? Because we have a different set of students than the next town, um, so.
Well, and the programs that a town has.
Yeah, so if you wanna go to the next slide, this was the, this was another attempt to just give you a snapshot, yep, of, this is total out-of-district expenditures, again, minus Concord, Carlisle, regional. But just for total, without normalizing in any way, um, we are the red bar in the blue bars for total out-of-district expenditures. And then on the right, it's a chart of number of students out of district. But again, that could include charter, school choice and special education placements.
It could, but that is also a little bit more interesting because in theory, all of our enrollments are more similar.
Correct.
So now you are looking, they're more similar, they're not, you know, they're not, they're just more similar.
The DART is more, the DART is more.
The DART is more similar.
Yeah, right, Tinsborough's tiny, Littleton's tiny, but yeah.
Yeah, this is maybe more graphic of capacity within each district than, you know.
Right, that's what I was saying, like the programs that exist in districts and what they're able to.
And like, that's why I, I'm almost, I'm almost interested in your feedback and what you wanna see because it's not that clear-cut to be able to compare, right?
Right.
You can't just say this percentage of your population is out of district and that's better or worse than their percentage is out of district, so.
Right.
But, but that's kind of the questions that the Budget Task Force is getting.
Yeah.
And as the school committee, I just wanted to start that conversation and see what makes sense.
The thing that's helpful though is that there's all the data.
There is all the data.
You know what I'm saying, like, like, like that's what I'm hoping people are gonna see from the Budget Task Force is that we have done significant analysis over all of the different comps to look at, how can, how many apples-to-apples can we actually find? And then we're triangulating it in some ways. And then something like this comes along and you say, okay, well, I don't necessarily know if there's a direct correlation, but it's numbers that we can talk about.
Sure.
And then we could, it, it allows you to ask questions.
Right.
And it might not, there might not be a specific outcome from it, but you're, but it's data and the numbers are real.
And we're elevating it, like I think that's one of the takeaways I'm having from the task force is these conversations, like I said at the start, was these conversations that we've sort of wrestled with, but we're now having at like a town level.
Right.
Yeah.
And I know that just, um, from, again, from a Budget Task Force conversation, if you wanna, it's just driving me crazy that we're on like the slide I feel least confident on.
Switch.
Could you, could you go back? Sorry.
As people are watching and.
I know, sorry. I was trying to get something up, but, um, one of the conversations that I think is, that has led to such product, productive conversations is understanding the variability that the school budget wrestles with year to year, that other town departments may not, right? So, and, and mostly comes from that section, right? Like the out-of-district placements and makes it just hard to project and makes it hard to deal with a two percent rollover budget and what does that mean for how we've had to live within those means year over year? I'm gonna take a sip of water.
While we clap? Can we clap?
No.
So, the, in, you might've said this when you started too, when I had to step out, I apologize if you did, but the other, the other thing that I also appreciate about this, and even again, back to the slide that you were less confident about. Is, it seems like when we talk about budgets, sometimes Westford is talking about things in ways that other towns don't talk about. Like, so when we talk about, there would, the budget would always be presented in multiple ways and we talk about new growth and they talk about the percentage of new growth. And so as the Budget Task Force, we talked about that and we looked at all the different things and we're like, we really should be consistent. And that's again, what I like about the DESI numbers is that's the same way that other school systems are talking about things. So like even when we talk about the out-of-district placements, there might be rationale for the numbers, but, but that's a consistent thing, is that we know exactly how many students there are.
Right.
So you can talk about it as opposed to, you know, if all of a sudden we started, I can't even think of a good example there, but, um, but like when we, there are different ways of looking at how money is.
And, and how the task force said this, this way of talking about it doesn't make sense anymore, it's missing the budget, benefits and insurance. This way isn't only a quick snapshot without showing the variability, yes. And so then I shared this slide with the, um, that we're at sixty-eight percent of town funds are going to the schools. So, uh, the Budget Task Force is, did, uh, put as much as we could onto a one-page handout. You may start hearing people talk about this or ask about this, we're hoping to sort of keep getting the word out about at least at this point, just what the data is showing us and what, and reactions to that. The, we're hoping for a final report by the sort of end of September, early October. Um, so if you later marinate on this and you think, here's, um, here's something that I think would be really helpful, have you guys considered this slice of information? That would be really helpful for us to consider bef- to really try to make the report as like one-stop shop as we can, right? Um, and obviously the takeaway from all of the Budget Task Force work is really that, uh, six to eight million dollar shortfall by FY twenty-six over the projected sort of normal increase of, of new growth. So, um, stay tuned for more of that great news and, uh.
And we, we did have a task force meeting where we talked about examples of consequences if we, if we weren't able to meet that.
We're, we're working, wrapping our heads around how to present that type of information in the report and staff, yeah.
Can I just say, as someone who's been part of the discussion for so many years of talking about percentage of new growth and just comparing pupil numbers, which is shared on DESI, I mean, I, I think Dr. Chu's analysis, or characterization of it, saying that it elevated the conversation is an understatement, I mean. So thank you to you and everyone who's been on the Budget Task Force for this. This is more than I ever expected to come out of that.
Right, yeah, right.
That task force and, and in such an awesome way, right? And the numbers are actually a lot different than what I expected.
Yeah.
You know, which was enlightening.
Right, right, and like, I think it's so powerful to be able to hope that whatever happens, right? Like whatever the recommendations are, whatever the, whatever that path leads to, that we are, are talking about this with some sort of shared collective, like, level, like base understanding, right? So that like if someone says, no, 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 you guys get seventy-six percent, well, actually that's the new growth number, that's not fully capturing, right? Like just to keep talking about all of these things and, and just raise all of our comfort level with them.
It was also just helpful because like we, we would hear from, you know, staff and different people who'd come to our meetings during the budget cycle, who would be quoting different percentages from different communities. And we're, again, we're like, uh, I'm not really sure how this compares, and now we see how all of that compares. And that was one of our things going into, cause I agree with you, like I didn't expect to see the numbers that we saw. We were looking first to see, okay, is the, is the way that the pie is being allocated appropriate? Or, and if it is, does the pie just need to be bigger? Or it could even be a combination of both, but that was kind of what we've been looking at throughout this whole process.
And I find it really, that, that sixty-eight percent, I mean, that's like a new number for us, right? We never talk about that number, but that feels like a really important number to, to, to have, to know. Do we know that one going back like ten years? I'd be really curious to have ten years of that. Not the other districts, that's too much work, but we know where they are now and.
I have it, I have a data set of five years of it, um, and I couldn't vis- I couldn't get it to visualize the way I want. So if you wanna play with pivot charts, I'll send it to you. And the depart- the Division of Local Services, the, the state data for the. And the depart, the division of local services, the, the state data for the town stuff only went back five years. So I, I'm happy to, like, we could get DESI data, I think, going back further.
Forever.
But the, the town, the town total expenditures, we'd have to like pull out of.
Cause I have like twelve years worth, but I don't know where I got it, I'd have to look.
Of ours?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, sorry, I was looking to, to draw that out against the, the benchmarking.
No, I would say, I'd say we assume that where other districts are now is some sort of average of where they've kind of been, you know, like if you look at the, say sixty-two is a, a pretty good benchmark average.
Honestly, I don't know if we can though, right? Because like, look how surprised we are when we look at this. Like I kinda do feel like the thing that's been helpful is as much as we can compare across time.
Yeah, maybe not.
With other, with other, and I think the five years that you did, you did do the comparison with the comps as well, so that's already.
Bear in mind though as well, we have a slightly higher percentage of our population in our schools.
Right, right.
In some of these other towns.
So if we're putting the same, if we're putting similar amount funds as other towns, but we're spreading it over more students, that's why our per pupil is probably so low too.
Yeah.
Thank you Valerie and Budget Task Force.
Yeah.
Professor.
Thanks. All right, I didn't give enough time to that in the agenda, so we are now on to school year twenty-three, twenty-four, school committee goals. And we are, would be, this would be our second discussion, so we're ready for a vote. As a recap, these came out of our retreat. They should be in your packet. Goal one is to increase sort of our data-driven decision-making. Goal two is to form a start, school start time working group. Goal three is to continue our fee review in finance subcommittee. And goal four is to do a DEI review of policies. So we've had a little bit of time to think about them, if there's been any suggestions, feedback. I am taking names for if you're interested in joining or creating the start time working group. And then we would look to approve them, so I'll open that up to commentary.
Well, I'll make the motion now and we can discuss.
Sure.
Under the second, a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four goals.
Great, thank you. And then commentary, um, questions, discussion? No, great.
Are we okay on the timelines on some of them that we've put in? And we've got for the school start time working group to kind of.
By December?
By December.
Present its findings, uh, da, 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 and that's in order to like be in the budget, yeah, I think we gotta do it.
Me too.
Gotta make it happen.
You have to try.
Yep.
They're aspirational goals.
And we will do a mid-year check-in on them.
Do we need to do some professional development on town management, is that what you're suggesting Sean?
Okay, all right, well, you know, they're our doc, it's our document, so I guess continued input. And again, get back to me if you wanna be involved in the start time working group, so.
We didn't vote on.
What?
We didn't vote on.
I know, sorry, sorry, I was just wrapping up, yep.
Do you want that to be emailed, just to like?
Sure, yep.
Oh, there it is.
Yep, and we need to keep that to three, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor of these goals for our own committee goals for this year? Okay. If there's anyone watching at home, this is what they were waiting for, we actually probably should've gone first.
Right, we, we didn't really think that through.
I did not think that through, sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize, anyone?
We think about the guests, we didn't think about. School calendar. I'm gonna let Courtney, we have, we, we have a hard copy of the proposal for everybody, instead of looking it on, on, if you want to just, there, I'll give these to.
Is this different than what was in the packet, Chris?
No, it isn't, it's what we have, it's what's in the packet.
Okay.
Courtney, Courtney did a nice job tackling, talking with everybody to get all the feedback to see how this might work. So I'm gonna let you talk, talk us through it.
So as a result of our latest memo of understanding with WEA, we are shifting our parent-teacher conferences. And so you have in front of you the latest revision of the calendar, which no longer will have early release dates or a delayed start on November twentieth or twenty-first because we will be pushing the elementary conferences to December thirteenth and fourteenth. That will make both of those days early release days. And then for the middle school, which also fell on those, the twentieth and twenty-first, they will be pushed off until January tenth and eleventh. Both of these conferences will fall after the end of their first marking period, allow time for teachers to complete their report cards, and then to appropriately schedule conference times during those two days, during those two early release days. Middle school does not have spring conferences, but elementary does, so that will bring us to March, where we're looking at the same date that was previously on our approved calendar of March eighteenth and nineteenth. But the differences will be that they are no longer, they will both be early release days instead of the nineteenth being a delayed start day. On the visual calendar, we attempted to provide a little bit more clarity by adding another shape. So we have a triangle that is now representing an early release for a specified school or grade level. And then we'll continue to use the slash mark when we're talking about a early release day that's district-wide, mostly for professional development reasons. So that triangle will be the signal to look a little further because we do have one that's coming up for Westford Academy for their back-to-school night, and then again, the elementary and middle conferences.
So the October.
That doesn't have a triangle.
We actually took that triangle off and we were gonna take that off altogether. So that's something if you want us to do that, we can do that. Because what we talked about is that WA has a lot of early release dates that nobody else has, when you think about their finals and their testing, and they communicate that to families, so we still wanted it to say the back-to-school night, but we thought if we even put a triangle, we can put a triangle there because then people will still look at it, but the main feedback we were getting from people is that that's the date that confused them. When there would be something on the calendar that was just for the academy and not everybody else, even though I think the key makes sense when you work through, but that's why we took the triangle off October fifth, cause it still has the underline on it, just knowing that the academy will communicate that to their families and to their students. And I guess the, and in my mind, I'm thinking we don't have all of their finals, half-day schedules listed on the calendar either, so.
On finals, they still can be at school because teachers are around, right? It, it's officially like.
Teachers are present, lunches are served, buses are running at the end of the day.
At the end of the day, so I feel like those maybe aren't official half-days, but it's like, oh, you're done, you can leave. So I wonder if there are, are there others than back-to-school night? I'd say if there are no others or one other that are like officially like, hey, listen, you gotta go home, everybody's going home.
Was, was.
They could be on there.
My question would have been, is it possible to do the line and the triangle? Like, was it, were they independent of each?
Well, if we're trying to say that the line, we're trying to, we're trying, the, the feedback that we received was that the slash that says it's for the full district and then when it's only for some is confusing, so. And then we were like, well, how do, we thought the triangle was a good idea, but then were we just gonna call that conferences? But then the reality is the middle school and the elementary conferences are now gonna be on different dates.
Right.
So.
No, I, I like the triangles.
I like the triangle.
I do, I do too, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a, if it should be a triangle.
I think there should be a triangle October fifth, okay.
Just add, put it back on.
I think so.
Cause it was there, Sandy did that in a nice, and I was like, I think that shouldn't be there, cause they're the same thing.
And then we'll add it back, they'll both be there somehow, they'll both fit there somehow.
Okay.
I have faith.
Okay.
Phew, man, that's a lot though.
Yeah, okay.
Looks great though.
Can you remind me, what's the window of conferences? Do we know that?
Yeah, so it's, they'll be in the afternoon, they'll go till, depending on the, depending on when the school gets out. So like elementaries and they also both get out at different times, it's basically.
Twelve, ten.
Yeah, and it's like a, it's like a five and a half hour window, so they'll go to, I think that the latest they go is five-thirty. Cause there's a, there's a quarter, I mean, there's a built-in time for the teachers to have lunch.
Okay.
So they get like a forty-five minute lunch, and then I think they'll end at five-thirty.
Okay.
And all parents will be invited to come in to have an in-person conference, however, we have learned that some family members appreciate having the virtual options, so that, that'll be available as well.
Right. One thing I was reflecting on that is that with this change, so I used to do the two-hour delay and the drop-off care so that I could focus at the conference without my kids in the hallway or whatever, right? And that option won't, won't be available now.
That's true, that is true.
And, and I, I had a question to Parks and Rec Director to see if a, a sort of specific one-off half-day programming was available, but you, because of their state regulations, you have to be enrolled in their programming. Like they, they account for early releases in there, but you can't just drop in for like that one day, so.
Yeah, you could be a part of their whole program, but you can't be a.
Right, right, but that reminds me that we should share this update with our community partners.
Sometimes like Roden Bush will do some.
School spring, Good Pick and Farm.
Yeah.
I think there's a circle on April fifteenth. And it says, and it doesn't look like it's a major religious holiday.
It's a state holiday.
State holiday.
April fifteenth, Patriot's Day is a Massachusetts state holiday.
Yeah, but I mean, I think it takes, all the other things that are circled and green are clearly religious holidays.
Shouldn't get a green circle.
I just think it shouldn't have a green circle, it doesn't kinda matter, cause it's during school vaca, it's during school vacation week anyway.
But other state holidays don't have green circles unless.
Right, I think it's weird.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you're right, because President's Day doesn't have it.
Yeah, President's Day doesn't have a green circle.
I was looking at the list, I wasn't looking at the circles.
Yeah, it's just kinda like, you know, we're trying to say these things are special and they're not like Patriots' Day.
And it's already blocked off to be off anyways.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, we'll adjust that.
We can add the triangle, adjust that, and then fix the revision date.
Take off a circle and add a triangle.
Stretch it, pull the corners, change it red.
And, and I just, I, I mean, there's, I don't feel like there's a way to fix March, right? We came up when we were discussing it last.
There's no way to fix March.
It came up when we were talking about last spring, it, it feels like this, it is what it is. And when it comes around, I'm sure maybe we'll hear feedback, but I do wanna make sure we, if everyone's amenable to approve this tonight and get it out there as official. Okay, any other discussion points?
Motion to approve the calendar as amended.
Thank you.
Seconded.
You can have a bill.
Crazy.
Okay, last, last chance. Add your squares, take off your triangles, nope, okay, all those in favor. Thank you, and thank you, I appreciate that, cause I know we have had that feedback about adding another thing, okay. Personnel update?
That was in your packet, I don't think there was anything specific to highlight, since there were any questions.
Cause you know, I'm waiting to adjourn a minute early.
This is ridiculous.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Wow, you really got us back there.
Thank you.
That's impressive.
All those in favor, have a good night.